This is the regular meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission. Today is Thursday, February the sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Seeing a quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. Madam Recording Secretary, will you please take role?
Robin McNair?
Here.
Deborah Russell?
Here.
Andy Gavu?
Here.
Steve Gallegos? Susie Lopez Guerra? Jose Hernandez?
Here.
Thank you. We have quorum.
Thank you. Everybody, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, members of the public may address the Arts and Culture Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. No action may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Public, please remember to keep your comments to three minutes. Madam Recording Secretary, does the public have any comments they wish to make?
Ah, yes, we have one person. Logan, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hello, my name's Logan Pro. I'm the executive director and founder of the Frida Cinema, which is located on East Fourth Street in downtown Santa Ana and also resident of downtown Santa Ana. And I just wanted to make a comment just to give an update of our organization as of January. We'll be producing the monthly Downtown Santa Ana for Saturday Art Walk event and just sort of talk about some of the things that are in process. Basically, we were handed over the pre-existing website. And one of the things we're doing is working on the site to not only continue to feature the galleries that exist in downtown Santa Ana, but to give more context as to what is happening at those galleries. What is the show? Who is the featured artist? We have a team of interns from Chapman who are being commissioned to reach out to the galleries and artists and try to get that data handed over also to social media so we can promote that and make sure that beyond the vendor element and obviously, which is also a great feature, but that like the core of putting a spotlight on the existing artists downtown Santa Ana, what's happening in the galleries is being featured. So that when folks look at the website, they can learn about that. We're working on revamping a new program, which will still have a map, but again, a little bit more detail as to what is happening inside galleries. And then lastly, I just became aware that at one point there was an artist registry that from what I understand has just sort of... I don't know quite what's happened with that. But one of the things that we're working on is to revamp that and have that be an element of the downtown Santa Ana Art Walk website so that we have a one-stop shop where people can learn about the upcoming art walk. People can learn about what's happening that weekend, what's happening in the galleries, but also have a feature where people can learn about the artists in the galleries that exist in downtown Santa Ana. So my hope is that I'm going to be able to get at least some data on the pre-existing site, but if it looks like we have to kind of start that process from scratch, that's something that I've already talked to the team of interns to do. So we had a kind of a light introduction to that at the Arts Now Summit that was held that Robin put together last week. Still kind of getting my hands on sort of the mechanics of this thing and to grow it out gradually. We were able to do an art walk in January and February and are looking forward to just expanding it from there and identifying optimal ways to allow the community to provide us information that they want shared or included as to how they are activating their spaces and what they, how they want to get involved, basically. Basically, it's a community event and all are welcome to jump in and use it to amplify themselves, to perform. I've talked to Robin about how we can start to invite SAUSD to get involved. So if anyone has any pointers or visions or ideas for the event or what it could use more of, things you'd like to have seen incorporated. You know, it's going to be a process. You know, we have already written one grant. We're trying to get more, more support for it. But it's important to point out that whereas it was previously produced by Downtown Inc., which would fund it from a tax that the business would pay, it is completely no longer a downtowning project. And so we're basically starting from scratch. It's a very humbling and exciting venture to take on, and we hope to do it justice, basically.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Madam Recording Secretary, are there any additional public comments?
Uh, no.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. This is the time for the commission to consider matters under the consent calendar, items one through four, which basically is our calendar, our notes, minutes from the last four meetings. So do I have a motion to consider items one through four? To approve, I should say.
My motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wu. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. Is there any matter for discussion regarding the minutes? Okay, hearing none. I call for a vote. Madam Recording Secretary, will you please take a vote?
When I call your name, please say, yeah, your name. Robin McNair?
Yay.
Deborah Russell?
Yay.
Andy Gavu? Jose Hernandez? Thank you. Pass.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. As you may or may not be aware, there have been some shifts on the commission with the recent elections. So we want to acknowledge that and thank our past commissioner, Wizzo Fernandez, who is, who has stepped down from the commission. We welcome back Jose, who is representing Word Two. And we are introducing Dr. Susie Lopez Guerra, who is the mayor's appointee for the Arts Commission, who should be joining us soon. So we welcome all of you. We're excited. This is a great team and looking forward to continuing working together to move the arts forward in Santa Ana. This moves us into our work-study session. We have one item under work-study session. Please note that there will be no motion or action taken on this item. This item is the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study Six with the Economic Impact Survey. So Tram, would you like to kick off that conversation?
Sure. Yeah, so as you all already have received my email about where we are in terms of collecting the surveys, and as you know, we're still under fifty percent. We did collect a few more, but it's, it still hasn't broken that fifty percent mark. And, and it's, the deadline to collect all of this would be May, so we're only three months away. So I'm hoping that those of us who are here listening, including the public, if there's something we could do to push for this, you know, final three months to get that, to get about five hundred more surveys, how do we get five hundred in three months?
Um, I have a question, what I wanted to say for this meeting, which is how are organizations being asked? Because I have, you know, maybe the last three events attended. You know, didn't plan to collect surveys myself or didn't have sort of the capacity to do so, but noticed that, you know, people weren't, and I think just as the, you know, as the holidays have passed, maybe it's not top of mind for a lot of organizations. And I'm wondering what is our means of ensuring that they remember this is important and they're reminded of that?
Yes, I mean, I personally will send not only reminder, a little bit of a script of what to say, you know, to announce, to announce that we have these surveys. I attach the QR code flyer, among other flyers, even the handwritten one to pass out to their participants, if that's easier for them. Many of them do respond that, yes, they will be doing this, you know, as part of their grant. But sometimes the day of just becomes chaotic, I guess, and, you know, folks don't always, like you said, have it at the top of their mind. But, yeah.
And how long after the event? What's the window of time which would be acceptable? Like if an event happened a week ago, three weeks ago, what are we looking at?
Technically, technically according to the instructions, it has to be collected at the event. They don't like it to be emailed after the fact. That I don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure why, you know, that's their, their stipulation. So that makes it trickier. Once the event passes, then sometimes it's a little too late.
And I would like to add, thank you, Tram, for clarifying all that. I actually worked with Tram and Gabby. We took a master comprehensive list that we have of all the organizations and we, not only did we host an informational session and provide that and send out the recording to everyone afterward, we sent a whole body of resources and materials. And then every time I went to an event, I would follow up with the, with people and say, hey, are you aware of the survey? I took surveys out myself. People have contacted recently, for example, Rolampago had a beautiful event that they, it was filled the house, fifteen hundred seats, and they did follow up and do some surveys. So I'm hoping that helped with our numbers. They did have some hard copies, so I'm curious, Tram, about the hard copies. How that works, because sometimes people don't want to do the technology, but they would rather have the hard copies.
They can scan it and send it back to me, or I can go, go collect it. So let me follow up with Rolampago.
And that said, too, we did a call for action, trying to have an Arts Now community meeting to help activate the arts community as we rally around and champion this to get that data for the economic impact of the arts and culture on Santa Ana as a viable economic engine for the city. So I know, for example, Logan is stepping up and putting that into the art walk information. Perhaps we will find it on the registry and other types of avenues. But I would, I welcome a creative conversation with this think tank as to what are the additional things that we could do? Because I have followed up with several emails myself and have seen many come through from Tram asking people to participate. So I don't know, that's what we tried to surface. What are the barriers for our artists and the arts community to participation and, and activating the surveys?
Madam Chair, if I could.
Yes, please.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, I, I appreciated Logan who, who spoke up about the way that he, he will be in charge now of the art, of the art walk in downtown Santa Ana. I look forward to, you know, just his leadership and more diverse and inclusive art walk. With that, I, I did go recently to an event he had there yesterday with Gustavo Riano and his screening of his documentary. So anyways, I would love for, for somebody like him to, you know, especially if he has interns from colleges, to perhaps have a booth or a place where we could, that could be incorporated into the art walk. I see that as, as a potential, you know, opportunity for us to, to get that. And I do apologize. I believe I haven't been as, as involved or proactive in, in those, these efforts, but I'd definitely send me something that I'm going to be having on my, on, on my mind as I go out, you know, and, and engage the community and the arts, which there will be several events coming up.
Yes, I do believe that there are a lot more, and as art walk really starts to reemerge, and thank you, Logan and the Frida for that. It's very exciting that we have those opportunities. We have to get everybody, Tram, and you can get us all a Santa Ana shirt again. You can go out and collect surveys as well as we go and visit things too. So I see that Vice Chair Wu would like to make a comment.
Yes, and I'm wondering if part of the barriers for the surveys is just that, even though the survey itself is fairly self-explanatory, the language is a little bit difficult to, to understand for most folks. And admittedly, I have not gone out and collected a lot of surveys myself either, but I do remember when I did, I had to actually speak all three languages that I know in order to explain the survey to people. And I had to help walk them through as well to make sure that they understood. So that might be part of the issue, just because the survey itself is in one language doesn't necessarily mean that the language of the survey is still accessible to the folks. It was helpful, I found, to sit next or stand next to the person and translate as they went through.
I think another obstacle is just that at an event, you're often planning for, you know, the mechanics of the event, and having one extra person is not, you know, in the plans necessarily. So I know when, during a lot of the summer events, when I was out collecting, it made sense that it was somebody external to the organization, right? That I, I didn't have any other responsibilities. I wasn't going on stage or, or, you know, trying to start an event. But there are quite a few events. I sort of started to catalog some of them. And I know in the summer, we all committed to, Tram did such a great job of putting it in a spreadsheet and saying, which ones are you going to? And we committed. I don't know that we made a very big dent, but I think that's another great strategy that we could all, you know, identify events that we will be at and then where we can collect a certain number of surveys.
Yeah, actually, that was where we collected the bulk of the beginning. It was from those events that we, that folks signed up for. So I'm really thankful for that. And you're right, that is very effective. So I don't know, would you, each of you would know what events are coming up from your own networks, you know, in your own community. I actually, when I see something come through on Facebook or somebody emails me to invite me to some events, immediately I will reach out and say, hey, can you please collect surveys? Even if it's one or two, it helps add up. You know, so if you see that too, please, if you know your friends, your colleagues having events, would you like me to resend you the email that has the, the surveys attached?
Sure.
Please, just reach out to them and say, or if you can go like, like Vice Chair Wu had mentioned, sometimes your presence has to be there, otherwise they don't, they don't have enough manpower, resources, some of these smaller events. And anybody need an extra T-shirt? Because that does help to just be official, you know, when you approach, because I, I've had to collect surveys too at several events, and that helps so much. Nobody questions it as much with your, your Santa Ana T-shirt saying, hey, would you like to please fill out this survey? Does anybody need a T-shirt? Nope, okay. But I'll resend.
Yeah, I want a T-shirt.
Now, there's, I, I, one, two, three, two. I think there's at least six events coming up.
Oh, yeah.
That I think we could, and I'm sure that you all might have six more of your own that we could be thinking about. And I have a couple of questions about ones that I think are regular and we, we should probably, I'm just curious if they would apply in this case, so.
I'm sorry, what was?
I, there's a couple of other ones, like the, there's a little farmer's market. They call it a Thean Geese that happens every Sunday here in downtown, very close to the Frida. And I noticed that they have live performances sometimes of music.
Oh, yeah.
And so it's sort of a cultural, it's, it's food, it's culture, it's vending. And so I assume that would apply, but I wanted to make sure.
Yes, I think if it has arts and culture, then it can apply. And as long as it's nonprofit, nonprofit arts and culture. So that's the two. So that's why I can't do businesses like The Den, for example.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. I know, I wanted to at one point.
What about, so even open mic at The Den doesn't count?
Correct, oh, yeah. I guess, but no, because The Den itself is not a nonprofit.
Cool Lab, same thing?
Yes, Cool Lab is good.
Okay, Cool Lab is good. Okay, because there's a Cool Lab coming up in a week, I believe.
Oh, Cool Lab's excellent. You can do Cool Lab.
So is, so they have to be a nonprofit?
They have to be a nonprofit arts. I mean, arts related. The idea is, what art? How does the art attract people to come and spend money in the city? So it's not the farmer's market that we want to say that attracted, it's the arts that attracted them.
Tram, could you also maybe perhaps clarify, because in, when you gave us information, there is a specific BIPOC survey, and then there's a regular survey, and what we are trying to achieve with that. Perhaps you could clarify, and that would help us to provide more direct support to organizations in that way.
Yes, they do separate the two. They'd like to have, let me look at, if I can find an email where they have their clear language. But I think they want a certain percentage to be BIPOC, forget what it is. It's going to take me a little bit of time to look for it. But yeah, they just want, and it's not a high percentage. In fact, I think we will meet that percentage. But it's mostly because they're doing a nationwide survey, so they want to make sure that every city is intentional about collecting surveys from that population. I'm, we don't have that issue. But they do want to, there is, there is a specific survey, the way they coded it will go to organizations that were BIPOC, the, they're, it's in their mission that they are serving BIPOC community versus non-BIPOC. So I will send you both. Each, on the survey itself, we've actually labeled it at the very bottom, and it says BIPOC or not. So if you need that, or I'll put it in the label too, so that you'll know to give that to that organization versus other organizations. Yeah, welcome paper. Paper surveys too.
What about their, I know that there are artist, author talks at the Santa Ana Public Library, kind of on a regular basis. Are they included?
And I've, I've been, I mean, I've reached out to them, but again, you know, whether or not it happens.
Okay.
Every time I see that too, on the Facebook, I'll always say, hey, can you please collect surveys?
Just in terms of other big events. There's a literary festival happening at the, with Libra Mobile. It's their fifth anniversary at the Heritage Museum. And I imagine there'll be a lot of folks there that we could make a, put a big dent. Obviously, Art Walk is coming up the, that same weekend, so that would be, the Literary Festival is the fifth of March, and then Art Walk is the fourth. There's also a theater event happening on the fourth with Breath of Fire inside of Grand Central Art Center.
Yeah, if any of you, I mean, I will still do it, but if they hear it maybe from somebody other than me, then maybe they will feel more like, oh, okay, I, I guess I have to do this. If you have more of a personal relationship with any of the folks you mentioned.
I would definitely, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think it hurts that we double up, even if they've heard it from me. I don't know if they'll tune me out, you know, it's like, because I do kind of remind them a new, fresh perspective, be like, okay, they'll light a fire under them.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm just.
I can help with that one, Debbie.
Oh, I was just going to take a, a quick moment to introduce or to say that Commissioner Lopez Guerra is here on her iPhone. I think she's traveling from a meeting. She has joined us. We just can't see her yet.
Yes, welcome. Hola, I'm sorry, I don't want to get a ticket, because you know the Santa Ana people, so. But I'm so excited. I apologize for being late. It, I promise it's for a good reason. We were doing listening staff, listening sessions, and they were just so rich, and I was trying to leave. But I am humbled to be in the presence of so many people here that I know. And I'm, I'm excited to learn and walk with you all. Does it, do you have questions for me? I think most of you, I've had the blessing of knowing in different phases of my life. But tell me.
Commissioner Lopez, could you just, just give a brief introduction about yourself, just for everybody, one more time?
Of course, I'm Susie Lopez Guerra. I have lived in the city all my life. This is home in so many ways, and I currently live in the city with my husband and eighteen-year-old daughter, who's a senior at Santa Ana High School. So some of you are going to be holding me tight in a few months when she's leaving me. I was a former gallery owner on Broadway. We used to own Cantera, for those of you who knew what that was. You didn't know? I didn't know that. So, and, and, and you're going to know this, I danced for many years. So the art is, the art and what it does to humans is very dear and near to my heart. So this was, this was a wonderful opportunity. I have to be very honest with you all. I'm a little bit scared of, of what, what this entails, but I'm also confident in, in sharing time and space with you all and knowing that, that we're doing the work that, and I'm going to say this, and I don't care who gets mad, that our babies and our families need, because they're our babies. And I'm not, I'm not being diminutive or anything. I'm embracing with love. And I've been in education for over, oh my God, almost twenty-five years, and it's been a series of fortunate events, and I hope that we can provide space for everyone to have a voice and feel welcomed and feel loved and, and become the best versions of themselves, however they see that fit. So I'm all over the place, but that's me, and here you have it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez Guerra. We are so happy to have you join us and thrilled to engage in this work with you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner McNair.
We are, Commissioner Lopez Guerra, you're about to say how you could help with something? With some of the survey?
Well, I think some of us can tag team and tap shoulders of a few people. So I think this, again, you tell me if I'm taking too much space, but I think it would be important to, to have, if it already exists, please cut me off, but have a layout of what things are coming up. And then maybe we write who, whose shoulder we can tap within those leading things. And then that way we can say, okay, Robin and I are going to do this one. Josue and Debbie are going to go this one. So they're not getting, we don't want them to get five or ten taps, but I think for them to see it through different lens would be really powerful.
Yeah. Okay. I also found that, I found the percentage, they want at least two hundred of the eight hundred total surveys to be collected from attendees of BIPOC organizations. So we're at, with the BIPOC, we're at one hundred sixty-eight. So we're almost there. That, that should be not a problem. But it's collecting everything else, the extra five hundred that we need right now.
Yeah, we can start that list of events if you want. Like I said, I think, I'm sure we could generate at least enough for each one of us to attend one, I think.
Agreed. So could, could I work with you, Tram, and we start a Google Doc? We could get the, each of the commissioners, since we can't all be on it at the same time. We could get each of the commissioners to provide you a list of things that we could put into that document. Because I, I'm with you, Commissioner Russell. In addition to the things you just mentioned, we have Boca de Oro on March fourth. We have several opportunities happening for musicals and schools and other things that I'll mention later. And, and so I love it. There's a lot of things coming up that we could absolutely tie into.
Hey, everyone, if you can, please email me all the events that you know, and it's okay, don't worry about overlapping with others. I will weed out the duplicates, just send me all events you know that's coming up from now until May, the end of May, to try to capture everybody.
And then we'll do it just like we did before with the Parks and Rec events. We can all do signups for various events.
Yes.
Because I'm treating Boca de Oro like each individual, that is like its own event.
Yes, yes, and it actually is. So that's, that's a great strategy. So some of these events that have different components, where it will attract completely different audiences. Yeah, especially these day-long ones. So yes, we can collect more than, what, minimum, I mean, maximum of fifty at each event, but yeah, more, why not?
It's hard to get fifty, I'll say. The other obstacle is, and this points to Vice Chair Wu's comment, is you actually spend, it's not like you just give them the survey and then walk away. I feel like there is some interaction. There's, I felt like I kind of had to make a case with each group. And so I, I realized, you know, when I thought I could get a hundred surveys or something, I really was closer to probably maybe twelve.
Yeah, yeah. Same. I had to give them my phone, you know, so there's no excuses. Here you go, use my phone too.
Yeah.
Yeah, take the survey.
Wow, okay, I didn't do that, but.
Okay, well, if I may ask, is there, pardon me, is there an age requirement? I'm thinking I have access to like our ASB kids and having them engage in that. I mean, that's civic engagement. Is there an age limit or requisite?
Huh, that's a good question. Usually they say that it's one per household, but if these students are visiting the event, why not? They're spending money, so, and it's attracting them.
And Commissioner Lopez Guerra, this is what we're trying to do is activate. We only need like fifty, no more than fifty per one event. So even if we have. So even if we have multiple things going on, um, we, we don't need thousands for one, but what we're trying to do is uh capture the economic impact data. So if the students are spending money, we can. And we've been doing it at some of our district-wide events like this, uh, the when did we do summer musicals? Or some, yeah, we did it at the summer musicals, and we did it at some of the, the Airmant of Note that we hosted at Santa Ana High School earlier, and a former commissioner came out to collect surveys, so.
I'm thinking of activating, I, I'm, I'm thinking of activating them um of having them be out there and supporting us, because if we're thinking it's taking a long time for one person to do it.
Yeah.
We can give them civic, like, I can give them volunteer or community hours, and they're out there doing the work. And then I'm gonna mute myself again, but my last part is is it possible for us to ask the youth commissioners to help us with this process, especially because a lot of them are our students? I don't know if I'm like already dipping my toes in trouble, but let me know.
Well, we have discussed in the past some intersections between some of the commissions and the, and um I have worked with the youth commission to activate them in some cases, so it would be perhaps if they could go out there again, um, just, we have discussed the liability of sending kids out there to gather surveys, and so how we do that? We have to be very careful um in what we're asking our kiddos to do and where we're asking them to do it. But we trained our NJROTC for the Airmant of Note event, and they were able to get surveys, for example.
Okay.
Yeah, we can discuss more of that.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
So. I, thank you, this lovely discussion. Any other thoughts? Barriers, considerations, because we definitely have to put in, um, call in all the, calling out all people to help out uh with this, and getting our arts community rallied around this, champion this cause. Because at the end of the day, we also want to use this to help us um present to the city council, and our goal is to have all the commissions. Let's start with the Arts Commission, present to the city council, so they know what the commissions are doing on a regular basis every single year. Is there any further discussion about the Economic Prosperity Study, Impact Study? Excuse me. Perfect, just had a swig of water, okay. So moving on, I have, I'm very excited, because it feels like there's an uptick in things that are happening. For example, this commission wrestled with the um Art Walk and did some research and spent some time, and now we have an organization that's doing, producing it, and this is very exciting. Um, we are activating our community for the Economic Prosperity Study and looking at sustainable funding. And now there's actually an opportunity, uh, I wanted to update, because I've been, I was just looking with Vice Chair Vu. And former Commissioner uh Fernandez, we were taking a look at what are the components of the Arts and Culture Master Plan? That Commissioner Vu spent so much time looking at and identifying things that we could do at no cost to get it started and keep things sustainable. So that was, we were working on that, pardon me, and then things shifted. And so the, I have the subcommittee going and have asked uh Vice Chair Vu is still on it, and also Commissioner Gallegos is gonna support. And our focus is gonna shift a little bit. We're still tying it to the Arts and Culture Master Plan and the things that we can do within it. But what's really exciting is there is an opportunity to focus and examine the percent for the arts program. Where that idea of getting one percent of public art impact fee to go to sustainable funding for the arts and culture. So we're going to, this team, subcommittee, uh tram will help us organize the meeting, will work on researching how other cities are doing and what's happening with that as we align it to the Arts and Culture Master Plan. And then we will come back and present our findings at future meetings. So I'm really excited. This opportunity is happening, and we will continue to find ways to activate all the commissioners around areas in these regards. We just know that we can't violate the Brown Act, so we're gonna start here, and then as that surfaces, we can develop more, activate more work around this to lead this collectively in small groups, so. Um, that's what I wanted to share. All right, moving on, does the staff have any comments they'd like to share?
Yes, um, we're kind of halfway through the artist grants now, um. And as we're moving through last year's uh grantees, we're, I'm, we're in the process of developing an RFP for the next round, that's gonna be in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. So we are definitely seeing more in the future. So it'll be about the same amount, um, about three hundred thousand to distribute to arts and culture uh nonprofit organizations. So just like, you know, that's about to be released, you know, uh roughly next month or so. Um, and uh at our next meeting, uh, we'll be having two presentations. Um, uh, one is about uh repairing the Little Saigon Sign. Uh, I forget what intersection it's in, but, and the second one is the Chinatown Memorial at Bush and Third Street. So two folks will be coming in to present about what's being done with that. That's it.
Thank you so much. Is there any question from the commissioners, first of all? Go ahead.
It, it just sparked my memory that um we had all these discussions about the COVID Memorial, um, plus, and I'm just curious if there's updates on that. And also on the mural restoration um funding that I believe was approved in twenty twenty-two. I just haven't heard anything um about, if that's in mo- motion, et cetera.
The COVID Memorial, I, I have, we haven't seen any more direction from council for that, so I think there's a pause on that for now. And um for the mural restoration, I'm in the process of developing an RFP for a mural conservation consultant. So that's, that has to go through that, the, there's a city process for that to go through RFP canal, that's the.
Uh, to add to that, I understand in talking to Travel Santa Ana that they are in the process of leading the cataloging of the murals in Santa Ana. So that's gonna be good data, and we are working to tie even the murals that are happening within the school district to that too. So what, I think it'll be great to have a good database that will be helpful when we look at a mural restoration programming, because I think that's an important part of sustainable funding, and certainly something that um I'm seeking to address within the school district. So how do we do that in the city too? All right, um, does the commission have any comments they wish to share?
I do, um. Since I didn't get a chance to, uh, Commissioner Lopez Guerra, I hope you are still with us, um, and it's just, it's an honor, and I'm humbled as well to be among so many people who I've shared many moments of my life with. Important moments, um, and uh, I, I just wanted to also applaud uh, uh Logan and your work with the Frida. I'm uh just the most, the biggest fan of your institution and all the programming that you do. And I'm so excited for what, what this will mean for the city of Santa Ana, um. And I, I attended the, I, I with Chair McNair, I attended the, I think, Arts Now Community Forum. Um, and I, you know, I know our attendance was not uh as robust as we would like, or as was, was liked for that event. And so I really hope this becomes something that um you will have more conversations, and we will have a chance to really in, invite more members of our community, more artists, and also, um, as, uh, you know, mentioned about our babies, more of our youth and our children and our families. Because I am just a huge advocate for making sure that we think about our families when we think about the arts. And um, I just want to say a- again, mention with there's so many events happening, um. There's a chocolate uh storytelling festival happening at Alta Baja this weekend, um, with uh our local artist, Alicia Rojas. Um, the Creer Studio, um, another great place we can collect surveys possibly, has an exhibition, and then also um the Libromobile, which is associated, has the the uh Literary, Literary Festival coming up at the Heritage Museum. Um, and also Libromobile is doing some amazing things, um, like innovative things, I want to say, with like communal reading or, or quiet reading, and they have open mic nights, and I'm just so impressed with how they're expanding, how we think about um literary, literacy and literary events. Um, and then also, uh, we have Les Mis coming up the first week of March at Santa Ana High School. And Breath of Fire, I'm both on the theater front there, is back at the Grand Central Art Center. And the last comment I just want to share is, um, it is time to talk to our council members and make the ask for funding. Um, I hope that we can be as strategic as we can when we do so, and um, in the past, we have gotten together and, and put letters together. We've, um, you know, talked to people in the media. And I think it's time that we do that again, so people don't forget that this funding, you know, we need to ask for more, we need to make it sustainable and a regular part of our budget. And so I'm open to any discussions um that we can have to marshal our resources for that. Um, and I, I'd say, I, I believe Tuesday City Council meeting is sort of the launch of those conversations.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. Any additional comments by commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Hernandez.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, um, I, I want to definitely echo Commissioner Russell's comments um in, in regards to, to the funding that I believe was, was a really important part of the work that uh we did, and I was in honor to, to be a part of with many of my colleagues on here and those that are not on here uh anymore. Um, because well, uh, that was a, a moment that is very rare, as I've found in just uh funding and, and grants opportunities, and being able to give a leg up uh to those community members that don't have a grant right, or that don't have an understanding about how uh the, the processes work, that, and that, that can, that many of them receive money for the first time in, in their history, and um, then it was, you know, uh substantial, I'll just say, and there's many amazing stories, you know, of, and, and uh, when pro- the products that came out of, out of the funding, and I felt we were also very meticulous in, in our process of, of seeing who did, who got these funds and, and, and um and who we believe were paying too much funding, and we needed to open it up for more, so that other folks that so, um, I, I'm looking forward to having a conversation with uh council member uh, and Vasquez on this matter, and, and I have obviously encouraged every one of us to have those, you know, one-on-one conversations with of them, especially as, as Commissioner Russell mentioned before, the, the next city council meeting. I, I also want to uh again, just uh say that um, you know, gentrification and the arts has been a conversation uh in activist spaces that I've participated in uh over the years, um. And perhaps at, at different moments, uh, the conversation lacked the nuance that, uh, that is present in any uh controversial conversation. And I feel that the Frida Cinema was, was caught up in, in the middle of of this debate about what, what was a gentrifying force and what wasn't. Uh, and so I had never actually been to the Frida Cinema until recently uh with, with Gustavo Yanos documentary. Uh, and I just was really uh proud of, of the work that is apparent and the passion and, and the direction uh of Logan and, and his intentionality of reaching out. Um, and, and also, you know, I, I see the potential for for so much beautiful uh work to be done there uh to, especially, you know, specifically target the Latino uh minority or, you know, Spanish-speaking community, so that we can have um this, not, then everybody has a community theater, uh, a cinema, and so this is just uh something that I feel we should embrace, and, and, and I think in time more can embrace, and I've committed to, to those efforts. Um, and lastly, I want to just uh welcome in our, our new commissioner. Um, Dr. Lopez Guerra. She's um yeah, known her for many years. She's an amazing uh, uh, you know, a woman, a, a force. Uh, you know, in, in the arts and for the youth and for our students here in Santa Ana. Uh, so yeah, I'm, I'm very much, um, just very pleased with this new addition. Uh, and very just, um, overall grateful to be serving with everybody here. Uh, this, and, and of course, uh, ma- much thanks to the staff to uh just do so much good work for this committee and for, for the arts scene and culture in Santa Ana. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner, or Vice Chair Vu?
Yes. Excuse me, my voice has been going a little bit out today. Um, I'll start first by welcoming um Commissioner Lopez Guerra. Uh, very nice to meet you. I hope to meet you in person soon, and I know you saw that you were intimidated. I think that you will find this commission not to be intimidating at all. And I um cannot wait to see the many contributions um and collective work that we'll achieve together. Um, I want to say also this now being just about two years since I was appointed as um a commissioner, it feels very full circle now that um the issue of Dotcom Inc. and that Dotcom Santa Ana, Dotcom Santa Ana Art Walk coming now full circle now, and with the Frida Cinema taking over, I'm so excited to see how much more community can be involved, how much more it can be tailored to our, uh, our community's needs. Um, and I was just like a small anecdote of that, of the work that Frida is doing, um, the Frida Cinema is doing. Um, my wife actually was the one to text me about these movies that are happening um throughout all of February. And uh we are going to three of them at the Frida Cinema. And I would really like to, like, applaud the Frida Cinema for having like an international lens too. It, it's one of the only theaters that I can see Wong Kar Wai films, Bong Joon Ho, Park Chan Wook films, and it's just really wonderful to see that. Um, and on that note, I do want to make a comment about the recent recent and not recent, like various tragedies that have happened throughout our communities. Um, and like this current atmosphere of increasing spectacles of violence that is more visible. Um, and I really want us to I really want to share that the way we get through this as a community is to continue to build within our communities, and Nicholas can use as strong as we can. Um, and the arts engaging the arts, being as engaged as we can with one another is one of the ways to do that. And so I just want to acknowledge a lot of the, the trauma, the grief that's happening, and offer, not even as a solution, but offer as a way of expression, arts and culture for that. Um, and yeah, that, that concludes my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Vu. Any other comments by commissioners? Then I will um bring it to close by just saying I am so in awe of this amazing, beautiful group of people who are in service to our community. I agree with you, Vice Chair Vu, Arts and Healing Engagements, we need that more than ever. We know that artists help to heal lives. We've had the first responders, artists are second responders in all forms and all ways. Um, thank you so much to lifting up and reminding us of these important things and the humility with which each of you serve. I want to underscore a couple of things. So if you are interested in taking the whole fam and our babies, which we all love, and every time we talk, we talk about our youth, we talk about also um children of all ages, right, even into the older ages. But this coming weekend, February twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, Godina's Fundamental High School is showing The Little Mermaid. And that will be a really fun, there's multiple performances each of those days. Um, it is the season of musicals. I'm so pleased that several of our elementary schools in March will have Disney musicals in schools. March, by the way, is the kickoff of Youth in Arts, uh, sorry, Arts and Education Month. So I welcome you as arts commissioners, if you're interested in coming in and seeing any of the arts programming and um meeting arts educators, uh, I welcome that. I would be happy to facilitate that as we celebrate Arts and Education. And Boca de Oro is the kickoff for that. And, and the school district and the city have recognized that both with proclamations. I'm, I love that we're embracing visual performing literary arts and culture and of all things. So I love that um a- after Boca de Oro slides into Art Walk and you can slide and you can slide over to Santa Ana High School and see Les Mis, as Commissioner Russell said. You can also slide on to the next day and enjoy more literary arts from the beautiful things that Libromobile is doing. And, uh, thank you for all your hard work around the Economic Impact Study and for rallying around, and let's rally all the folks that, that we can to join in this, and I look forward to working with, um, Vice Chair Vu and Commissioner Gallegos to come back with some data that we can get to look at this one percent impact, so we're, I feel a good tide, you know, the good things are happening at the state with funding for education, arts education. Now we're looking at what we can do to match that in the city, and I think this is just the right group of people to lead that charge, and I, and so, thank you to, to the staff, and, um, with that, I will bring you more dates of more exciting activities, because we have a musical coming up at, uh, Valley High School and Saddleback High School, lots of them, so there's opportunities galore and chance to, to activate those surveys, so. Anyway, thank you, everybody, I appreciate your time and service, and it is my humble privilege to lead you, and I look forward to the next meeting, which is, uh, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, and this meeting is officially adjourned. Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everyone.